Join me. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for these collaborators and community leaders. Thank you for all the rain that we've received and the warm sunshine. We wish all of our students and teachers a safe return to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And we thank you for this opportunity to gather and care for our community in the way we all do. In your loving name, we pray. Amen.
The United States of America and the two republics for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state and one God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Item three is visitors to be heard. Do we have anyone who's signed up? Would anyone care to speak? Yeah, okay. Moving on to item four, our consent agenda. Disapproval from approval of minutes from the July ninth, twenty twenty-four regular city council meeting.
Take the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion to what?
Approve.
Approve the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion. Thank you, Tony. All in favor? All in favor and none opposed. Item five is presentations, and we have item A, presentation from Artura Engineering on updates on the flood infrastructure fund project.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Jonathan. Thank you for being here with us.
Of course.
Rescheduled meeting.
Thank y'all for having me. I am seeing if Jill has the PowerPoint.
I got it.
Is it the? You got the slideshow?
Yep, right here.
Okay. We can make this work.
Okay.
Awesome. This is the latest one?
That's, yes, that's the one I got.
The one you sent us for the meeting, the one that is originally scheduled.
Good evening, council. Thank y'all for having me. I know y'all got a long night, so I will go through this PowerPoint presentation. We had given and conducted a workshop with the community leaders. And the mayor and Mr. Farmer had asked if we'd come back and make sure council's caught up to speed and we kind of get to a beat as we need to. So I wanted to go through this project and take a little bit, y'all see if that's okay, maybe ten, fifteen minutes. If I need to slow down and we're interested in certain areas, please let me know and please stop me if that's what you want to do. Really, so this project has been in the works for a while, and this started back, what year was that?
Nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, and a lot of this foundation, the concessions project started. Riverbank was part of that team and Hill Country Alliance and River Authority had started with a conceptual plan. And when we came on board season here, we kind of helped take that plan to fruition and we're looking forward to applying for funding. This program came from the Texas Smartville Board Flood Infrastructure Fund. City of Banderas, one of the first communities to be awarded these funds, which awarded forty-five percent grant and about fifty-five percent low interest loan dollars. And so the total project amount was up five point four million. And that consisted, if you want to go on the slides for me, if you can kind of help me go as we go. And the project was broken down in three components. One that we're, number one, that we're calling the citywide localized flood, and there'll be a map in the. And kind of give some perspective on why everything's laid out. Citywide localized thing that's going from the Medina River through Main Street under Texas sixteen, then actually. City Hall right here. The number three, it's the section of Maple Street that's right there in front of the park where the park entrances are. The parking lots, widening that road, adding parking spaces, adding sidewalks, and making a set of pedestrian spaces for the park. And number three, one that I'm most excited about would be the park and riparian improvements. Right there in the city's main park, again, expanding that parking lot, adding a kayak ramp, pedestrian walkways, elevated walks, and then improving the drainage there. That's already, you see the erosion going on, adding vegetation. Keep going. Here's kind of a layout. That kind of would help as I go through that layout. So you see the citywide as it goes through Maple Street. Y'all see the screen? So, well, our project starts in braising Maple Street because right now it's a little lot of crossing. So carrying in large flooding events, making that an unsafe cross and travel, upsizing and improving Cedar Street. And then again, here on Hackberry, increasing flooding there because again you have another little lot of crossing. I'm going to do the next slide. Here's kind of a zoomed in for the Maple Street section right there, right there next to the park. That road consists of a full depth replacement and adding concrete ribbon curbs to protect the investment of that asphalt. Protecting longevity of that road, adding in a shoulder, allowing for parallel parking, and then adding a five-foot sidewalk on the park side to allow pedestrians to go up and down the park, which will tie them to both entrances on the park.
Not beside walk, but on the other side.
It's on the park side.
Other side.
We had a slide in here, and we talked about it. We did have Texas Parks and Wildlife and Hill Country Alliance at our workshop that we had just a month ago. And kind of added a slide in here because they kind of set the foundation for the goals and objective of what this park would look like and our riparian efforts taken. And our team has spent a lot of time and effort working with the mayor, working with city staff, to make sure we're staying true to the original intent of this design. And so I feel pleased to present now as we're wrapping up and before going on construction, staying true to this original perception and keeping these original team players part of this process as we move forward. So just kind of, you know, can you go pretty much on that? So this image is kind of hard to see because it's so zoomed out. This is again of the city park highlighting some of the pedestrian walkways, providing access, ADA access to lower parts of the river. So this is the Pebble Beach area of the park. We can see the parking access there. So this sidewalk is meandering through trees, preserving and saving as many trees as possible. There's very few trees being taken out through there, and the ones that are will be taken out of the smaller, small entries, protecting the heritage ones, of course. And then the park is laid out to, to almost like, in those certain locations, bury the existing park benches that are there. It's how you provide ADA access into those park benches. On the main park entrance side, having a sidewalk that would connect on the both ends of the park. And then you see these green, these darker green hatch areas, these are the bio swells or vegetated channels that would consist of buttersticks, kind of creating a step down for the drainage to be slowed down, and then creating that natural filtration as a water.
Is Glenn having a question?
I have, I have one question, and I don't know if you're aware of the area. You know where the locals call dripping springs?
What you mentioned.
And they call it L B.
Oh, okay. So that's, okay, call that L B. So from dripping springs, have you been down there lately or in the past year?
I have.
Two years. Okay. So from dripping springs to First Street Bridge, that's overgrown. It's in its natural state down there. But a lot of people walk through there to get to, I mean, that's kind of where the flowing water is. And so I'm at, I'm wondering, were we going to do anything with that area, clearing it out, or are you leaving it as is?
We are not clearing vegetation that's there. Not, not part of this project. If the city would like to do that, we'd probably leave that to public works.
It's really becoming a little bit of a safety issue down there, really, because there are people that go down there. But, okay, go ahead.
Well, and that's a great point. This project would be, and our goal is to protect the riparian health. And somewhere, there's a fine line between riparian health and no growth.
Weeds.
Right. This, this project, in the sidewalk, you will have your disturbed area, and that was a long process to get environmentally cleared. Where the sidewalk is, that area would naturally have to be cleared for like destruction and equipment and all that to go through. So you have that natural clearing, the maintenance of that, and the outside of that work area that would remain natural.
The, the prettiest part of the river is from dripping springs up to First Street Bridge, the prettiest part of the river.
I think, yeah, I agree, and providing good, safe access to it, keeping people from, because right now, right now, you do have people walking this natural path to go down that steep hill. And then you have a few people that don't mind a few steep hills if you see kind of walkways heading down there for the vaccine. And the other main access they're coming in through here, I was, this is what I refer to as Cobble Beach. Is that not, is that not the right name? Anyway, so that's the other.
There's always common different springs. I'm sure, I know what you mean by Cobble Beach.
So, but this, this, this pathway is following where people are naturally already treading, and that was the intent to, to protect what, what is currently there, the nature that is there, but provide a safe access. And these sidewalks, let me go ahead and note, we are getting close to the river here. And then being a course along the river here, and we know what floods do in this area. They are concrete sidewalks, and that was a process for us to go through, putting concrete sidewalks across the rivers to get the environment to be cleared. The reason we felt like that was the best decision is these concrete sidewalks, these concrete sidewalks are pretty stout. They got pretty deep toe walls into them to be anchored into the earth. The toe walls are about two feet deep, and so you won't ever see them, but just to keep them undermined and cracking and failing just after the next big flooding. So they, they are pretty, they are pretty going to be anchored in there pretty well. I would have loved to have done something more natural walkway, do a gravel walkway or something like that. But it, it would have just, in a big flood or a few couple of years of lack of maintenance, you would have noticed there. So, so that was kind of the decision, more than y'all may want to know, but that was kind of part of that decision. So all the sidewalks here would be at concrete sidewalks with two-foot toe walls being anchored into the.
Thank you.
Before you, oh, wait, there it is, that's what I was, you didn't quite finish that part of the park.
Yeah, so this, this is, this is the fun area. So right now, if I'm starting on this end, you have that existing concrete slab people are kind of utilizing to walk down. I know the city has since prevented vehicles from driving down here, but that wasn't the main access point. In the same sense, we're using that existing pathway, and that concrete will be removed and come back with a new road. Within, you see with the round valve, within a kayak ramp, I guess this image should show up, or it's barely hidden, but the kayak ramp being an entrance there for pedestrians and pedestrians that unload, tie up their kayak, and then go up and park on the parking lot and come down. And then you'll see, again, these being the bio swells right now. These are old extensions of Ninth, Tenth, and Eighth Street, where you see a lot of erosion. If you've been in the park recently during your flood events, that's where you get a lot of scouring. And so we're going to be coming back again. And there's later in the PowerPoint, you'll see the buttersticks I'm talking about. They create the kind of step down weirder and have that vegetated there. And then we are noting elevated walkways crossing those structures for pedestrians and then cross now that vegetation. And then the other feature, actually, can't leave it out, is a big part of this project, the work with Texas Parks and Wildlife, is providing fun angler access to the river, and the city had previously done an angler access. So again, in the sticking to the nature of protecting the riparian health and the natural vegetation, protecting our riverbank, but still wanting to provide access to enjoyment to the river, fishing, cantilever fishing piers that are anchored in, and then there's still piers that's in cantilever out over the water, so. I'm really excited about that feature.
So I, I can say that number one, that you have marked number one, that is also used for handicap.
Yes.
So, okay, so that's going to remain handicap.
Thank you. Great question. And that's, the sidewalk is a lot, it's a lot, and it's very zigzag. To provide ADA access.
That's what that switched back sidewalk is for. And G, the, that drive that comes down, that's for drop off and pickup only, right? So allowing that vehicle access to bring boats down to the boatyard and drop off.
Do we allow boats?
Maybe non-motorized, non-motorized.
Canoes.
Not motor boats.
Okay, let's keep going. Here's just a few pictures of what we were talking about, the existing erosion. Jill, feel scroll for me real quick. This, this image right here on the top left where her mouse is, that's the existing point where that kayak ramp is going. And that's just straight down. That's amazing, all the folks will kind of love it. That is going straight down from that existing concrete slab out there, right there at the main entrance, you see that big slab, that's right in front of it. So that's the natural point where we'd be putting in the kayak ramp. And Jill, feel slow then, scroll down. Just a few images, again, these might be two years old or more, and then just kind of highlighting the riverbank and some of the heritage trees there that were protecting some of the erosion that they're facing back now. This image, actually, on the left, I'm not exactly sure, looking at this one, if this is Ninth or Tenth Street, but this is the existing old vehicle paths that people travel down. And you see the erosion, the scouring that's going on from the drainage. So this, this section would be specifically turned into those vegetated bio swells with the buttersticks there where, where the existing drainage is going. And then both, both of those are looking right. And we'll scroll down. This is an example that was done, I believe this was Bernie. Yeah, it's over, it's, it's over, not overgrown in a bad way, but grown up intentionally. So you can barely see what they did, like a rock feature, kind of creating those step downs and the vegetated that how they kind of threw that in there for that natural filtration. This is an example of the elevated walks that would be, again, implemented for this project.
Sorry, my mouse is being naughty.
Stan, you don't have to like give me the look of like, hey, you're moving too slow. Okay. But I apologize. And this is, this is the same elevated walk that's proposed for this project. And this was in the city of Bernie that we're implementing now here in the project. Kind of cantilevered over the water with a ladder, so when your river is full, you can have a safe access and a safe access out. Going.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
On that Bernie project, did, since I've been down there and I've looked at the river, it looks like they put circulating pumps in the center of various areas of the river. Is that something that we might be able to consider specifically for that front part of the bridge where it gets kind of stagnant and there's not much circulation when water is low? Have to help improve that to where it's not such a hazard to swim in certain times of year during a drought? Because I did notice that they were quite visible, and that they were actually pumping and circulating that water through to keep it.
Yeah, it's definitely helping with y'all standing there and keeping the wildlife there. I think they worked with Texas Parks and Wildlife on that project. Do you know, Mayor?
No, but they would have to.
I, I think they worked with Texas Parks and Wildlife, and then I know the River Authority would probably be really excited to hear some interest on this one. And I definitely think it's a benefit, what, what that dollar is and the impacts and, you know, it would truly see a benefit to quality of water. I wouldn't feel it's too true.
Yeah, because from what I researched, when they, that project was funded for like right about two million, for that whole park. Which seemed pretty reasonable with what they, they did. I think they dredged a lot of that river to clean it up and have that stuff in. So this, this seemed like a really good idea when I was down.
This is just an example of a kind of vegetation that would be implemented there. We're not going to spend too much time on this, kind of just the vegetation zones, protecting that riparian health. Just a cross section, this is kind of just standard there for that river. Example of what a kayak ramp has looked like for other communities. Going, and then we just have more cross sections, more project. A lot of this is repetitive, and it's repetitive for a reason, because I know this council, and maybe this leadership may not be a part of it, but we wanted to make sure that we're being intentional with things that with the previous council and previous leaders had started this project back in twenty twenty. There's, it's, it's being repetitive intentionally to show, you know, trying to be true to that original intent of the project. So we can keep going. We have a couple of drawings in here. Jill, feel slow down for a second, six seconds, sorry. Feel scroll up. We have a couple of drawings in here where we kind of, at our, our workshop meeting, we've gotten to the different intersections and those little water crossings and how they'd be raising, be raised, and then adding it under buried culvert structures and then handle the flow, keep those roads during those flooding events. For Maple Street, this was designed for a twenty-five-year event to handle those twenty-five-year flows. And so that, that whole intersection right there will be raised. We should have different cross sections on that. Going. We show a cross section we talked about, Cedar Street. This is right there by the Mexican restaurant, and then is at the kickback corner.
Is that right back here?
Yeah. Yeah, so you got the Mexican restaurant, the kickback corner there, and then there's an existing culvert structure there with a utility line running right through it. So that structure actually here on Cedar Street is going to be upsized quite a bit. I mean, those of y'all that know, when, when Banderas floods, it's getting so high, it's flooding up to the kickback corner's balcony, and they have a lot of their HVAC system under there, so that's how high that water service elevation is.
And this will result in widening Cedar Street at that culvert, correct, by how many?
I think it's only widening about six feet, just because it's a tight roadway. Moving on down is here, or another one that's really close to here is Hackberry Street, and then you got the pizza restaurant, and then that's the county library.
Is that on parking lot by the pizza restaurant? Is that the, is that the city parking lot?
Yes.
So that whole parking lot right now, when you go out there and you look at it, it looks like a big trapezoid, and it is that way for the drainage. Our goal is to keep it that way. Unfortunately, due to the conflicts, we could only raise it so much due to, they got the church on the other side, and then you have the library on the other side, and already developed. So being able to tie into those existing infrastructure and to work with the utility lines there. We're raising that as much as we can to add in a buried culvert system to catch your low-flow events. So this isn't going to improve your hundred-year big flood events, and unfortunately, we, we know that because we know how high City Hall is compared to the park right next to it, you know, you're twelve feet higher. So just due to the natural terrain that we have to work with, our goal is to minimize the city public works to have those down Hackberry during your one-year, two-year, five-year, smaller stormy events. And so during your major flood events, it would be the same conditions, but we want to improve your flow, flow conditions, so it's not constantly.
And I'm sure you, you guys evaluated exactly what that might do going through Joe Davis's yard, right?
That's, that's correct, yes, ma'am.
I hate a big wall of water to come through there.
If we want to scroll back up to it, we'll show what we did. Go up a little bit more right there. So as it comes past the parking lot, and then it goes, it's going to go under Main Street, and that is right here. This is being straight to Main Street. Main Street, the culvert crossing that's right here, is one eight-by-eight box culvert, and then two twenty-four-inch culverts, which I know may not mean a ton to other people other than that's a lot of infrastructure dedicated drainage in a lot of areas. So that's how much water is being sized to go through this drainage area. And we just don't have the elevations to do the existing conflicts to match that. So our goal is to capture the low-flow events and then let it continue to go with the trapezoid parking lot as it currently is, and then funnel it to Texas dots to not, trying to mitigate impacts to the landowner here that they're currently experiencing. So it will improve it. What I'm trying to be transparent about is it will improve that area on the drainage, but there's nothing that you can do against the hundred-year, these bigger flash floods. And then our project ends at the Con Street, upsizing that existing structure and then tying back in. And that's going to go right through behind City Hall and the last culvert crossing there. This is just a summary of Maple Street. And then here's our, here's our existing typical section of how that street kind of meanders between being about nineteen to twenty-three feet wide. So that's what it's existing is. But if you'll scroll down to our proposed, what we're proposing is we're widening that road and then adding in, and this was one thing that we talked about, it's showing fif, sorry, it's showing fifteen, fifteen, what that would really be, is, is that was one of the comments we talked about during our workshop, is making sure that that stayed true to like a ten, what was that, ten, ten, eight, and then having the sidewalk. So making it two lanes, having a parallel parking in the sidewalk. So the, the lanes came out to be the same, but we want to make sure that we have parallel parking available.
So you've got ribbon curbs on the skate park side and concrete curves on the park side with, and they're cut curbs so that, for the water.
That's great. Go down, Jill.
And, and some, and some trees, right?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for stopping me. So this is, this is intentionally sloped, the lot, the park being on the curb side. So the water is currently, as it currently is, running down, so we're adding ribbon curve, concrete ribbon curve to protect the asphalt, so that's not getting undermined and cracked on this edge as the water is moving that way. And then we're adding curb on this side to stop and slow down the water, and then strategically catch the water with sidewalk crossings, it's kind of those metal grates that you'll walk over sometimes, where the water is drawn along right now. And that ties into those vegetated channels in the park. So if you'll scroll down, is that reflected there? You kind of see them here, but that's a small image. So we were talking about earlier how that water is coming down Tenth Street, it's coming down Eleventh Street and so on. So we're catching that water, and this is actually where that vegetated channel will be from the park. Is there some sort of riprap or, or salt food or something to slow that water down before it gets into the bio swell?
What do those words mean?
Or like riprap concrete, you know, with like a salt food. So the, the, the butter sticks would, would be acting as that kind of detaining it.
We're doing not the curb itself?
Now we're talking about once it comes off of the concrete. So it's not washing out the backside of the sidewalk. Yeah, so it's kind of going into like a mini detention area and going into those vegetated channels. Okay. I can show you on a couple of slides. Okay. Uh, let's keep going. That's just a summary of the park. And then here's just kind of a zoomed in of what that parking lot and the kayak ramp and that design there. Coming in between those two big heritage trees that y'all are familiar with. And then you see the meandering sidewalk with the elevated walk here, and then having ADA access to the entire park. And so ADA will be on the come-down for any. This is just showing the vegetation. There's a lot of little, little bitty letters inside these bubbles showing the different types of plants that are being proposed. And our team had worked with that original team with Texas Parks and Wildlife and Hill Country Alliance and their kind of expert sort of mapping. Going. This is just a typical section of those bio swells. And then this is what we're talking about, the butter sticks on the upstream side. That sidewalk is falling into like a maybe detention con, and then it spills over here to slow that water down. And it kind of pulls up and then goes down to the next one. These are going to be kind of that mesh-lined channels to protect the soils and the grass that's there. And then it's allowed for the grass to grow through and establish the water systems for those bio vegetated channel features. We can keep going through that. We don't need to get too into weeds.
That's it.
Yeah. So it's kind of summarize where we're at. We did that workshop. We got our environmental clearance. We get all my months mixed together now in March, I believe, saying that we are environmentally cleared to move forward.
And that's from Texas Parks and Wildlife Army Corps of Engineers?
There was a lot of, a lot of heavy hitters with that coordination. That was US Fish and Wildlife, Texas Park, Texas Historical Commission. And having to go to each one and present and then answer questions and RFI's and anyways. We are, we are environmentally cleared to begin, and then our final workshop that we had with our team leaders is very beneficial. We had talked about implementing and exploring a pedestrian walk to go from behind City Hall to this park here.
Behind the library.
Behind, sorry, behind the library. To the park, that. Provide access to the park. So there's a couple of loose ends that our team is exploring with the structural and the flooding that we had talked about for that one. So right now, where we're at, coming out of the workshop, is being completely hundred percent ready to go out for bid at the end of September. So it's like, I guess, just over a month and a half on this project. We had been on, we had wrapped up the design as far as we could, and then we've been, we were on hold for so long as we were getting environmental permission and getting that cleared, and then the workshop kind of gave us the feel-good to then move forward, put the resources needed to run this project up. So that's our current timeline, be bidding out at the end of this year. And then depending on how the bids go, or they make recommendation, we can start this project as soon as possible. Looking at, I would like to say the end of this year, most likely, the way bids go for two months, and then make recommendation. And we're also looking to be into this year, early twenty twenty-five.
Yes, ma'am.
I've got a couple of questions. Do you have a deadline on when this stuff has to be completed for this grant?
So we've, we we did, yes, ma'am. We've kept Texas Environmental Board up to speed on all the environmental communication and they are part of that review process. Um our environmental review with Texas Environmental Board lasted for fourteen months. And it was a lot of RFI's and questions and then it was like a hurry up and wait from our side. They asked questions, correct, and get them to wait. So we did have a deadline and we communicated with that with them. Um and to let them know where we're at, there's been no concerns from there and expressed with the timeline that we just presented.
Okay. And what percentage of this was grant money?
Forty-five.
Forty-five percent, which roughly dollars wise, see if I can do the math real quick, would be two point five million?
Two point, well, your numbers were two point, or four point two eight, no, thirty point.
So that that's construction dollars, the project cost, project cost was five point four.
Do we have to do all of it? Can we do just the portion of it? Can we do just the localized flooding drainage in progress?
Two, five point four times forty-five percent.
Two point four three?
That that sounds correct, yes ma'am. Th- this project would be bid out as one package. While it's, it's, it looks like three major different components, the, most of this work is street and culverts and drainage and then concrete. Uh one general contractor would be bidding on this package. They would have a team of subs to do some of the more vegetation and some kind of more of the specialistic workers. But we bid it out as one package. And the benefit would be then you have quantities to your side to speak to, kind of get, trying to lower the prices there. So instead of breaking up this.
One last question and then I'll be done. So this was done prior councils, right, or?
A couple.
Okay. So was there money set aside besides the two point, the grant money and how are we paying for this?
We budget for our loan payment every year and the EDC splits it with us, that's the FIF.
Oh, that's what that is, okay.
Yeah, the money was part of a couple of years ago, the fifty-five percent.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. You got it. Thank you. This next question. When, when was the budget set?
Great question, I know where you're going, this budget was probably set in twenty twenty. So has there been a cost analysis to the construction process members? And and that that is an ongoing conversation and and it has been addressed here. We wouldn't be splitting projects, anything out of this project. The bulk of the infrastructure has to be complete, but when it comes time to bid, there will be, there will be conversations, discussions in terms of. We do have, we backed up before I get too far down that road. When this was, the cost assessment was put together, it was put together with the high level contingency, knowing the nature of these projects. And we do that with any of these launching projects, just like we did with the Mulberry project. So we do try to put inflation on there as much as possible. No one could have accounted for thirty to forty percent that we've experienced through COVID. With this, there are current conversations, that's a rapid up and sign, on what project elements could potentially be in those cost savers. And that, to break that down, if we have five fishing pad access points to the river, maybe does that look like three? Does that look like two? Are there cost savings on sidewalks and stuff like that?
So you designed those as ultimate pieces of the package?
We're gonna have to. And that's, that's part of what we're reporting at all, so.
Yeah, I just don't want to spend a bunch of additional money on redesign or if we can have it where it's, where you can go to bid. It's clear, all cuts that could be pulled out.
But we don't, we we don't want to either, but that's not the city's cost, to to be frank about it. Those, those things is something that we had to do on our side to make sure that we're, you know, our due diligence presents a package. It's going to be affordable to the city and staying true to to the project.
And and staying true to the project is also critical because those, the fir- the principal forgiveness portion, that forty-five percent grant. We earn those points based on.
That's right.
What's in this project, so.
They potentially can have it out and get the forgiveness.
Yeah, that's right. So there, there's, there's elements we're looking at in terms of, again, if it's five fishing piers, does that come through fishing piers? If we're, if we're doing too much vegetation going up the park, there's a lot of vegetation that could just be encouraged by the city. Do we just focus on the riverbank protecting that? Uh so there's different elements that we're working with. And then another one not implemented here, I do want to talk about because it kind of plays into maybe future conversations is irrigation system for the park. Um and that was brought up here in the flood infrastructure workshop that we just had. So there is proposed an irrigation, a purple pipe irrigation system that would tie into the city's existing water supply um to then help establish these plants and then be of benefit to the city. But the long term goal of when the city is ready and the infrastructure is there, we cut it from possible water, completely disconnect it. And then in the future, potentially be able to add and reuse water irrigate the park. So to kind of see these conversations kind of blending together from past conversations of irrigating park with reuse water. That was implemented here in this project. And that would be an element that then depending on how bids came in, I would love to have purple pipe and irrigation in there. Where do we prioritize that in terms of some other improvements?
Could you not use river water to irrigate similar?
I, I don't think we're gonna be, I don't think we're in that permission for that, to be honest, I have not asked the river authority. Have you seen that in your experience?
It requires a permit, it's a surface water, it's a T C one permit.
Right. That's a good question, I'll, I'll look into that. I know oftentimes we will, I'd say we as engineers will fit on the contract to source that water. And that may be a method that's there able to utilize.
You know, they've got to get a lot of stuff established.
That's okay. It's going to be applied, be established. So that was part of the reason why the irrigation system was put there. Any questions on that and if something does come up or if there's a certain section of town on, you know, Maple Street, we didn't dive too much into the cross sections. If you'll find those questions, Stan, I would definitely, if I need to be back here at virtual meetings, kind of dive into some of these different specifics. If you weren't happy to, but I know you'll have a longer agenda tonight, so. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Appreciate you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item six, discussion possible action on the following items. Item A, discussion possible action on resolution two zero two four zero two four. For the facility use agreement with Banderas Methodist Church. Mr. Coroner.
For several months, the city has negotiated with Banderas Methodist Church on a facility use agreement regarding the church's parking lot at the corner of Eleventh and Cedar, crossing the church. For public parking Monday through Saturday. There in this proposed contract, there is a rental fee for the city of five hundred dollars per month, backdated to January of twenty twenty-four. It is a one year agreement that is automatically renewed annually unless canceled by the party. This agreement could help the church with maintenance costs of the parking lot used by the public Monday through Saturday. The only edit since this was before the council a couple of months ago is um is the fol- is the following paragraph, eight point nine, which speaks to the audit. So I called Mr. Giles and he was very amenable to adding something that will show transparency on their part. Show the city a total of all revenue expenses for the BMC account dedicated to the maintenance of the use of the facility.
So Stan, if I'm not mistaken, last time this was in front of council, that's what the council asked you to do?
Yeah, there was one other thing they asked and and Mr. Giles in the church wasn't agreeable to that. I'm trying to remember what that is, sorry, I'm lacking for a second. But there's one other thing that you all spent a lot of time discussing. No, not the price, I know the.
So that's what the majority of the discussion was about?
No, there's one other item. Oh, it was, was it, do you remember? Because we talked about that other item, we said we.
Did they actually own it?
No, it was a partnership.
No. That was one of the other things with this.
Well, it was.
Well, they, they, at one point they wanted the, the city to, it didn't decide it then, but it was. Yeah, that was, that was agreement before. Yeah. All right, I'm sorry, can't remember that other thing, but they would agree to that, that item that was discussed quite a bit. Now, the five hundred dollars was in there, you know, before I got here with, when they entered him and Richard was here and inherited the contract with the five hundred dollars in there, so um. But I did not specifically ask Mr. Giles if he would lower that, but it was my hunch, he was supposed to be here, but I got feeling as they would not go for that, he was pretty setting fast on the five hundred dollars.
Debbie?
This is the first time, fine, they put a proposed uh contract for five hundred dollars. Before it was much less, correct? Like a dollar, if I remember.
Oh, yeah, before this contract was a dollar.
The city was supposed to, uh I don't, I don't have that contract in front of me, Debbie, but yeah, the city was supposed to do the maintenance on it. We ended up having to spend a pretty chunk last time um to make up for quite a, quite a long time of neglect.
Ten thousand.
So the majority of the minor collections of the last year was, the majority of the talk was that it was quite a price increase from a dollar to five hundred. And to see if I was lowering now, whether that came before or after you were here. That, to me, was something that should have been asked, but because there was a lot of questions at five hundred dollars, how often do you have to repay that parking lot? Not very often. I mean, that's, it's not that big a parking lot and I think that was the majority. I mean, maybe I'm the only one that feels that way, but.
I remember we talking about, it was like thirty thousand dollars or something that we spent, some big chunk of money and we spent that money to repair it. And now they were asking for the five hundred dollars a month. Yeah. And then we started doing some math on that.
I remember the other discussion.
For a breakdown of those costs or proof that it was used.
That's where the audit comes in.
That's where this audit.
They.
But they're agreeing to, but I still think that that's crazy.
I remember the other item now, because this needs revival, we brought it up, was it clawback, you didn't use that term, but some kind of, if we cancel it and we paid so much and they haven't used it, do we get some back? And they were not agreeable to that, plus it's a rent thing too, which that's what we talked about, that you really couldn't do that.
I'm with Debbie, I think the price is a little high, but also it's a one year agreement. I mean, we're talking six thousand, you know, table it again or we discuss it after a year's plan, right?
Well, we're using it right now.
Well, I think the most we agree is it's going backwards.
I, I think the day is a lot on the weekend.
I, it's, there, there are cars in that parking lot all through the week, um. Lunchtime.
That crowded period of the week, but.
It is every lunch, every day at lunch.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to see you go back to math and lower the price a little.
Council can also just approve it at a lower amount. If you, if everything else is fine, you approve it at a lower amount, they can, they can take it or you'll bring it back.
You know, they could stop us from parking there too. I mean, they could gate it off.
Yeah, of course.
They could.
It's their property.
Yeah, they could gate it off, they're not allowing any parking there except for their.
And it, I'd like to see you too, that it was, uh, it was an EDC investment to, I mean, the EDC, I believe, invested fifty thousand dollars in constructing that parking lot a number of years ago. For the purpose of it being mutually beneficial.
True.
So.
So we have to pay some.
Yeah, and then, and then the recent increase and, or the recent repairs that we did.
You know, if it was three hundred dollars a month, it's a great.
Or five hundred.
All right, I was. Two fifty, three hundred, I'd be okay, but I think five hundred is a big deal.
One.
That's my feeling.
Are you making a motion to that effect?
Yeah. I'll make a motion and maybe change the red low fee on each five hundred a month.
So.
Is that the right way to do it?
You've got a resolution that you want and you want to amend one component of the agreement, I.
I'll just edit it. Well, we didn't get a second.
Yeah, so the mo- the motion would be actually to approve the resolution and the facility use agreement. With the, uh with three hundred dollars instead of five hundred dollars would be your motion.
I'm kidding. How do you do a deal?
You can just read what's on the agenda.
I want to.
I make a motion on the resolution.
Make a motion on resolution twenty twenty-four. Yes, zero two four for the facility use agreement with Banderas Methodist Church.
Where they now have.
With an amendment on the amount from five hundred dollars to three hundred dollars.
Okay. That is the motion.
No, second.
At twenty seconds. Is there any further discussion?
Just add one thing, I mean. Is it possible that we come back with that and then some sort of other lever, right? If, if there is significant maintenance needed, that we would look at partnering at whatever percent. You start doing the math, I think we said this last time, if it was thirty grand, you know, five hundred bucks, I mean, that's essentially five years we paid for the whole thing up and they're doing that every five years. So I just think that could be another component of making it more agreeable in the lower amount, that's some sort of agreement on splitting, you know, maintenance, where you have to approve it, not just them sticking a bill in front of us, but, you know, joining.
I don't know how assured they would feel going from council to council to council, I mean, you know, that, that that would be.
That's an agreement though.
Yeah, I think you make a good point and it's, that's four thousand dollars a year. So it's, you know, five years, you've got twenty thousand dollars. I mean, you can maintain that parking lot for, for a four thousand dollars a year.
For six, right?
No, for three hundred dollars. So, I mean, you could COCO, re-stride, do all that for less than five thousand a year, way less than five thousand. And then when it needs to be torn up and redone, I mean, they're not, they're keeping the basements there, there's nothing wrong.
And, and you don't have like a lot of high traffic, I mean, it's not moving fast or big, big trucks in there. That, that saves a lot of the parking lot, you don't have that.
Yeah, I think when you go back to a standard, just let them know that we've just, just made a big investment in the parking lot. And now we're, we're willing to spend four thousand dollars a year, twenty thousand dollars up five. I mean.
We pay for the COCO, you're right, and striding.
Yeah.
As opposed to asphalt.
I know it's a small amount we'd be saving, but I'd rather use that towards this parking lot we have down here or here and start doing things.
I think it's a good amount, I just think they just need to be a partner test.
Yeah, I do too.
So it's up in that way.
Okay, so we, yes, we have a motion and a second further discussion.
I just wanted to ask Stan, should we add that in the resolution somewhere or?
I wouldn't get into, into the, those specifics. I mean, the reality is that the way this is being done, it's backdating this to January. They're not going to reject the three hundred dollars. I mean, you've been used to, it's, we're in August.
Right.
And, you know, so any, any repairs that would be need, need to be done, the summer months are the most common time, but that's going to incur those, so I just don't see that being an issue this year and I would leave it for them to, to bring that up if they, you know, want to do that. There's other options that you can look at when you renew this, like not paying it monthly to them, paying it into an escrow account or something for maintenance specifically that they can access to maintain it as opposed to them having it and doing something else with it and you trying to audit them after the fact. I mean, there's different ways you could arrange this where it's not, you might feel better about it being used specifically for that maintenance.
I don't think they're, they're viewing it as a, I mean, I'm speaking for them, I don't think they're viewing it as a one percent maintenance, it's a revenue stream as well.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. There's no other discussion, all in favor? All in. Um item B is approval of resolution two zero two four zero two five approving a facility use agreement uh for the use of Banderas City Park for the B I S D annual traffic stand.
Yes, and I understand that this is a familiar item that has come before the council almost annually for this wonderful event. So this is uh pretty much like the other facility use agreements you've seen in the past, very straightforward for the dates and I, I think it's September seventh, but I think the agreement says September fifth through the eighth, for setup and tear down. Hope you're good.
Yes, correct. Debbie's second. Debbie, second. I.
Well, we already made the entire.
I've got a wish.
It's a home in here, isn't it?
I'll let you clarify.
Okay, uh, I make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two five.
Okay, Debbie, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, all in favor, number seven, thank you. Thank you, Stan. Item C is discussion and possible action on creating pedestrian entrances both by both gates into the park for residents and visitors wide enough for stroller or wheelchair accessibility when the city park is closed. Councilwoman Palmer.
Yes, I, I brought this on the agenda so that, um, we can discuss it as a city council. Uh, Josie Evans did come to our meeting and ask what the status of that was, and, you know, I thought we had already taken care of it, but in the meantime, it sounds like our city public works is taking care of that. They've made an entrance off of Eleventh Street, wide enough for a stroller and a wheelchair, and they're also making a path from there to the restroom area and also to the pavement. Now, they have not done the one at Eighth Street yet, but this was for when the park is closed and, and the, and the park's been open, you know, so far, hasn't it, most of the time, or have they closed it after raining?
Uh, sometimes when it rains, if that's close, it's five Sunday, it was closed.
Yeah, so, so what is the status of, of the entrance there at Eleven?
The one at Eleven is open. They might not have all the bricks laid, but it is open for those.
They have done that as well.
Yeah, they have done that right away.
There's also an existing entrance like you described, uh, at Third Street and one on First Street that have been there for.
I've seen the areas first, I haven't seen the one on Third, but yeah, I have seen one on First as well.
So, no action?
I don't think we made an action.
Thank you for that update, Stan. Item D is discussion and possible action on the enforcement of ordinance three four two, Article three oh five, house numbers, Palmer.
And I have that on the agenda because I brought that to city council's attention back in two thousand and eighteen in January. Uh, I know that I've discussed with you and you guys in the past how I've talked to, uh, emergency, um, people, and, and they've said that the city of Vandera, they have the hardest find finding the houses when they get a call. They're driving and around, driving around because there's so many homes without the numbers on, on their houses. And we have an ordinance, uh, to that effect. Uh, ordinance three sixty two also addresses, uh, the house numbers in the ETJ. I know that I've spoken to Stan a couple of times, and he says that John, our code enforcement officer, has already sent out the letters to those, to the identified houses that don't have numbers. And so then, can you take it up?
Yeah, so when you brought that up, I'm from the Palmer at the last meeting, he jumped right on that and went out and actually went door to door to a bunch, trying to catch some people at home, which he was successful, and some people fixed them right away. But then, of course, some people love them on home, so then he went and sent those letters out and, uh, and had responses already on some, some will probably still receive them, but yeah, he jumped on that right away, so.
So, and what are we gonna do if they don't comply? But what are the consequences?
Yeah, there is, you know, three minutes before court, there is.
Fine.
Yeah.
And so is that gonna be the next step since we've given them plenty of time to get those numbers up? Or are we gonna give a couple warnings?
I would say at this point, the timeline is not up.
Okay.
So, I mean, it is only a couple of weeks.
So that letter is considered a warning?
That is the first.
Or is it just notification?
Just notification, one little warning.
So would we be doing a warning after a timeframe?
After that, if there's no response, then next is a three minutes before then.
Oh, so immediately they get missed before, okay. I just wanted to make that clear to the public then.
So, Stan, um, have you thought about implementing a program where we put the numbers that we require up at somewhere and then build?
Yes, and the ordinance does say that, that's right. The ordinance says we can't put them up ourselves. That's another step that you, we could do before we go to court route, but.
And also, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at this, uh, this reads house numbers must be visible up to a hundred and fifty feet from all angles, so what about a hundred and thirty-five degree angle?
I, I couldn't, couldn't answer that right now, dear.
Well, I wouldn't be, because we've only got a, you know, I guess, yeah, I don't know.
I just, I, I think, uh, emergency services would just like to be able to see it from the.
Absolutely, I would think they would too also. So, yeah, it might just be a thing where we stock up on some, some numbers and have them available and, and a specific method that those are placed on a residence.
Yeah, and there was some discussion this week, just, just to give you some more information that whether this was applied in the ETJ. So, real quick, I won't pull it up, but I can show it to you, but actually in three, in the building code, chapter three, building regulations, three point oh seven, that, um, that apply, applies to the, um, it talks about the jurisdiction, it's the ETJ and in the city. And there's a, and there's a paragraph lower down that actually talks about, this is a requirement to do this. That's different from three point oh five, which is on there. So three point oh seven, under sign, says you must have this, you know, number.
It's also in ordinance three sixty two.
Well, yeah, that was an ordinance that passed that was, three sixty two was the one that was part of three point oh seven. I think it was adopted in the three oh seven. Yeah, ordinance article, but ordinance three forty two was the one you were part of in eighteen that addressed the specifics of what, how the house numbers, all the specifics that you have to do with the house number, so. But, anyway, so that's why we can do it in the ETJ, the three point oh seven.
What is it?
Are you done?
No.
I just wanted to also add, we've gotten some feedback from a couple of people that got the letter already, and it's a financial burden for them, even though it's a very minimal cost. You know, if you buy it from the county, it's eleven dollars, uh, maybe it's cheaper elsewhere, but I have heard that from at least two people. So maybe the city, before we find them, could look at some kind of fundraiser to help maybe the people that need help with those, getting those numbers. Because I think they want to be found just as much as we want to find them if they are in an emergency.
Well, it's really not specific to like they have to be metal numbers, or they have to be black numbers, or they have to be, I mean, they could paint the numbers on their house.
How many letters do they send out?
I think it does say it has, it needs to be reflective and so that they can see it in the dark. You know, if they just paint black, you're not gonna be able to see that. Just food for thought.
Yeah.
It must be visible at night, I guess.
The one comment I would add, I appreciate what Joe brought up. Think of our citizens here, there are quite a few elderly people that may not, that live alone, if you bring that in compliance, if they were told it's twenty dollars and somebody will go put them on their building, they would be very happy to do that.
Did you answer Brett's question?
Yeah, I mean, how many are we talking?
Um, I don't have the exact number, but I'd say we're in a range of three dozen.
I think he mailed forty letters out.
Forty, but.
About three dozen.
And there was about eight that fixed it on the first day when he was out there.
And they're eleven dollars at the county.
Yeah.
Like for the double sided reflective.
For the sake of time, why don't we just wait and see what those numbers are, and we might need help. Then we can address those individuals as needed, and if it's something we can do to help them do it.
Yeah, we need to let those letters fill it out, and then see how many of those forty, twenty of them do it themselves, and our world is one of those.
And we've had some staff members volunteer to go out and help hang those for those people as well.
Thank, thank you, Lynn. Moving on to item F, discussion and possible action on a request from Vandera City Marshal for an expenditure of six thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars to purchase six new body worn cameras and ancillary equipment.
Did we skip any?
If they.
I'm so sorry, I sure did. Uh, item E is discussion and possible action on negotiating with the county commissioners to extend the lease agreement ending July second, twenty twenty nine, for use of Vandera City Hall building, Palmer.
And, well, I just wanted to give you that a lot of the time.
I think that's the right.
Okay. That's right. Uh, anyway, um, when I brought this, wanted to bring this to the city council's attention, yes, I know there's, uh, four and a half years left on this lease, but I did not want us to, you know, put it aside and then, three years from now, the county say, hey, you gotta be out in here, and we don't have anything in place. So I would like to possibly, I, I guess we might need to direct our city attorney to, uh, come up with a, a lease agreement. What, what I wanted to discuss with the council is that we may not need it for another ninety-nine years. You know, we may just need it until we don't anymore. I mean, I would like to see us be able to have our own municipal building someday, you know, in the near future, maybe not in five years, but, but, you know, I don't know, should we continue that lease for another ninety-nine something years? Or maybe twenty years, or?
So I think one thing that you might consider reaching out to the county about is instead of, at this point, worrying about renegotiating the lease, is at least talk to them about a memorandum of understanding or some type of letter of agreement that kind of specifies some of those things. What are they willing to entertain, what are they even willing to do, instead of, you know, getting into the whole drafting of any kind of lease extension?
Okay.
Let's get the, let's just get a, some type of letter agreement in place that says, here would be the terms, if, if you need to extend the lease, here's what we're willing to do, for example, and what, what those terms might look like, before we ever.
And you, you would come up with a letter of.
I, I can, I can do that, I think before we even do, uh, even get to that step, you know, maybe Stan or the mayor or whoever the council wants needs to just sit down and have a conversation with the, with the county judge or whomever we need to talk to over there to.
We may have to get on the agenda.
Yeah. What you, here's what you don't want to do, is we don't want to wait until we're in our last year.
Exactly.
With a lease, right? And so I think the sooner that you at least start that conversation at some level, the better. But I agree, I mean, ninety-nine years is probably not something that's, you know, feasible, but.
Stan, I think Stan and I can just add it to the list of the things we need to talk to the judge about.
Okay. Then we'll know for sure whether or not to wing the move or not.
But I agree too, or bringing it up now is better.
Yeah. Can, so can, can you and Stan bring that up to the judge and come back with us on what we hear?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so now we'll move on to item F.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, discussion and possible action on a request from Vandera City Marshal for expenditure of six thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars to purchase six new body worn cameras and ancillary equipment. Dan, uh, this was something that was not budgeted for, is this a grant match?
No, I do not believe it was. She, I almost positive, no, this is just something, something she wanted to buy. She has money in this line item, equipment purchase, really wasn't designated for, um, body cameras, but I think it's come close enough that we could put it into that, but it's more than five thousand dollars, so that's why it's coming to the council. Yeah. And we're not moving money, so it's not really a budget amendment, so. But the five thousand limit is why it's coming back to you. But she has it, she has it, yeah, this line item has eight thousand dollars in it.
Are you recommending?
Yes, I'm recommending this, very, very good equipment for officers.
Okay. Yes, sir?
I'll make a motion to approve the request from the city marshal to extend six thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars to purchase six new body worn cameras.
Uh, does this need to be done by resolution?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Item G, review Texas Parks and Wildlife grant schedule for upcoming potential projects.
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Okay, Susan was gonna give you this, but I'm gonna fill in. She's on vacation, but, at a wedding, a race. Okay, so, uh, there are three parks and wildlife grants that are coming up in the next fiscal year. You can see the first one, first one has a deadline to be determined, I'm sorry, so we don't know when that is exactly, the deadline. But the other one is February first, the second one, and local parks grant. That's one we're familiar with, we apply for the disc golf.
We did, we missed the deadline.
Yeah, but we, but we can still talk about it for next year, because it'll be still on the next year's budget, but. Um, so the first one, boating access grants, I'm just gonna zero you in, because you probably read this over, I'm not gonna read it all to you, but under projects, where it starts breakwaters, loading docks, you can see that the very end there, there is restrooms to include also showers, potable water, and security lines, but anyway, it's restrooms. So, we know we have a restroom on one end of the park, down by Third, and one by Eleven. So, with all these improvements with the fifth grant we just heard about, it'd be nice to have another permanent restroom and stop, um, renting porta potties, potties every year. You know, have a restroom in the middle for the public to go along with our nice improvements in the park. So this would be, uh, one that would be, uh, a very positive lead on that for restrooms. Of course, there's a whole list of other things that, um, possible projects for that one. Um, recreation trail grants, this is for motorized and non-motorized. So there's been a lot of talk about horse trails, I don't know if there's been a lot of talk, or council's interested in motorized, but definitely there's a non-motorized component to this, and trails throughout that, um, southern end of the park as a possibility, even throughout the disc golf course too. So that's a February first. So, um, of course, this is the very beginning, we don't even have a project scope, I don't have the money to say, hey, what our portion would be, but wanted to bring it to your attention to see, um, what the council's wishes were moving forward. And then, of course, the local park grant, which is a fifty percent match up under fifty. And like I said, we use that on the disc golf course, uh, request in this last cycle.
Yeah, we were not awarded.
You were not.
Um, I'm interested in the boating access grant because, um, you know, we got that, uh, fish stamp fund, the HAP grant to do the Engler Park, and similar to what happened, costs rose over time, and we kind of did not get a chance to finish out that project, so we might could apply for both sides of the park, for, you know, a restroom there and to finish out that roadway. Um, and then restrooms on the, the main side of the park as well. I don't know when that will be due, the deadline is to be determined, and I don't know, what do y'all think about trails?
Eighty percent.
Apply for every grant key in there.
Yeah.
Eighty, seventy-five percent.
Right, I think we need to maximize every dollar we get.
Are you, are you looking for a motion, or are you just?
No, this is just some guidance at this time that we move forward in the future, and keep it, and keep you updated as we move forward. This won't be the last time we talk about it, we can talk about more specifics as we move forward.
Yes, first, Jeff? Me too. Yes, ma'am.
I agree with that as well, but I was wondering, do we have, uh, something written that says that we cannot have jet skis and motorized boats in our river?
I have not looked for that.
This is state law. I know that, well, I guess in Curville they do, in Curville they have motorized boats in, in the Guadalupi, and jet skis.
They're having jet skis going in the Indian River.
And jet skis too.
So, it doesn't have to do with.
I'm just wondering if we have something in place that does not allow it.
Okay, I do.
Does motorized be, be, you know, controlled?
Control.
Somebody's allowed to attach their kayaks.
Yeah. I mean, I, I wouldn't mind riding my jet ski in the.
The Indian River.
I can do it.
All right, if there's something else on the park frame, we will move on to item H. Discuss, right?
Uh huh, yes.
Okay, thank you. H is discussion regarding permit application pending the board, the Vandera County River Authority, groundwater district, groundwater from the Lower Triad, the Aquifer, that could impact the city of Vandera. So, who, you all might have to help me out here with our last conversation with, uh, the river. with the river authority and I know Lynn and Stan attended that meeting. The reason that we may potentially be interested in this permit is because they're asking for a significant amount of water out of the Lower Trinity Aquifer, which is our main resource for water. We all have access to the well longevity study that we have and it's a real concern, you know, potentially that they would be mining that much water. So I think that what we want to know is council poised to potentially contest that case or contest that permit. Thoughts or recall from our meeting?
Yes.
Can we do that, please?
We're talking about camp.
Yeah, OTX.
OTX. I thought it was denied.
It was postponed.
It's sent to a contested hearing.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, they are, they're going to keep hearing. And, and really and truly, I stayed there for, and I'm not advocating for them to get that much water, but I do know that they have a pretty decent attorney that is saying that they, that they legally have the right to that water because of whatever is written, you know, in the county laws and everything else of that, that they, that they have done everything that they're supposed to do in order to be able to have that water. So that, that's the other side.
And they're going to work together on the dates, attorneys for both sides on setting that in the hearing? So that wasn't announced, that will come out later.
Well, I think they're making a big dig for the water now because they understand down the road it's going to get harder and harder to throw out. So they're making that big dig down, that's smart on their part, but I don't agree with it, but that's what they're doing.
Okay.
A lot of water.
Um, the, so I loved that meeting after the public comment. But what I understand is they sent it to, to, to get scheduled for a hearing and we'll know more after that's done. So just something to be aware of.
Is there anything that we can do?
We can contest the case, it's a threat to our water resource.
Officially contested.
Officially contested.
You always add.
So we don't have a timeline?
Not yet.
But what, Dan, what does it take for something like that, I mean, we're talking several months?
Well, so I'm not privy to whatever was said at this hearing, I haven't seen any of the filings on it. I was on a team's a while back with, with the mayor and Stan and representative from the river authority. Yeah, it's a couple, it can take a couple of months to ramp up on something like that. I mean, they've been preparing for a long time before they ever filed for the permit. So if we're going to, if we're going to have a contested case here and we're going to contest it ourselves, then, then yeah, we would want time to look at what they have filed to see if we concur, see if they've, you know, truly demonstrated the needs required. But, but yeah, that date, once that, once that date is set, plus, plus we need to get, you know, if you're going to contest it, you need to file your opposition sooner rather than later so that you get all the case notices and all of those things as well.
I mean, my point is, I don't think we can just sit on the hands on this if it's something really serious, but.
Yeah, and I wonder, so what do you think? Do we need consultation with attorney at this point?
Could, I mean, that's next on the agenda anyway, if you want to go ahead and go into closed session, we could talk about this items as well.
Well, if we, I, I guess I just am curious to know if we are to, you would want a motion for action or a consensus from council on working on an opposition?
Yes, and yes, that's what we would, if, if you want us to begin doing anything and incurring costs to contest this, we need authority to do that. I would also, you know, if, if the city does want to contest that, I would want authority also to, if, if we deem it necessary, to bring on additional, you know, water council. Well, I mean, we, we have some folks that we use and of course, I would report back to the city council, but if we get into it and our team says, you know, we really need some specialized, you know, expertise who, you know, has done more of these types of hearings, then we would want to be able to do that.
I do wonder if we couldn't do a little bit of fact finding over the next week and bring this back to council on the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Does that sound fair?
That would be great.
Okay.
And I, I'm thinking that they didn't really deny them the permit. I think they tried to, you know, ask to just make some.
Cancel the hearing.
To make some changes and the opposing, OTX did not agree with those terms. So it wasn't like this board said, absolutely, we're denying you that permit. They said, you know, well, we'll allow you the permit if you do these certain things and not get as much, much water. And then they said, no, that they were not going to accept those terms and then that's when it was set.
So it was denied?
Yeah, it was denied, but I mean, it wasn't like outright denied, they were trying to work with them.
But then did the reasoning for their additional usage, did they try to double the size of the camp or are they trying to fill the light?
Irrigation, tanks, ponds, recreation. Oh, and they want to move to a, like a year round camp instead of a summer camp. And, you know, they have, I don't want to, I don't want to quote numbers, but I don't have the documentation in front of me, but they have an existing permit that they only use like a quarter of their allowable. And they're, so they have a permit, I'm going to say for like eighty acre feet per year and they're using like twenty acre feet per year. And they're asking for two hundred and seventy, which I believe is more than the city's permitted for. An additional two seventy on top of the eighty that they have. Moving on, we'll see it again on the thirteenth. Okay, so with your permission, council, since we are about to go into closed session, can we go ahead and move up announcements while we have public here because often we don't have your closed session? So I want to make sure we get announcements in before. The public leads, so I will move to item nine and address item A, an, now, or B, announcement by council. I'll make one that we have an open house scheduled for August fifteenth, Thursday, at the Silver Sage in the dining hall, not the great room, in the dining hall for the preview of project ideas for the red grant.
And there's some printouts back here if you want to grab one on the way out.
Announcement, okay. Any other announcements?
Yes, Debbie, do you want to announce the Texas music workshop that's going to be happening Monday? Here in, in Banderas.
Patricia, that's going to be Monday the twelfth at the Banderas Electric Co-op.
At Banderas Electric Co-op, but you do not need to be present. It's a hybrid meeting. The Texas Music Office is not coming from Austin. You want to be in the room, it's all set up and there will be a good group of us there. It's long overdue, we all know music is critical in this town, so.
And this is the first step to correct the city.
Correct, correct. And, and checking with other cities, it's, in some ways, we all see the TDA, Texas Department of Agriculture's logo on things. This will certify us as a music friendly community.
And having the workshop is the first step into.
Well, actually, it is the second step. We applied.
Okay, but for the announcement, there is a meeting at noon on Monday.
Right, and you can find it on Facebook if you don't want to go to the easy, okay?
We have.
You're welcome.
I will go ahead and mention the September seventh event. This is a Chamber of Commerce and City of Banderas event honoring the thirtieth anniversary of the Gringo honeymoon album. This is happening kind of at the Texas Saltwater Compound in Eleventh Street. An event from eleven AM to three PM on Saturday, September seventh. Okay.
Are we doing the future agenda items also now?
Do you want me to do that now? Okay, any future, we'll go ahead and address item nine A as well then, sorry, I was going to just announcements. Request by council to place items on an agenda.
I sent a couple of them, Stan already, so I sent those already.
I've got those.
Okay.
Okay. All right then, we will go back to item seven, closed session. Item A, the council will meet in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five five one oh seven two to deliberate purchase exchange trees of value for real property. A, voice quarter to. Item B, city council will meet in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five five one oh seven one. Consult attorney regarding free eighty agreement with main street shops and lots. Item C, the city council will meet in closed session pursuant to the Department of Government Code, Section five five one oh seven one, competition of plenty regarding to make rent up by the date. It is seven twenty-two and will reassess the provision of.